It's on. Okay, at seven o'clock, we have a quorum. I call a meeting to order. Please stand. Pledge allegiance.
(inaudible) To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Courtney?
Jenny Piercey.
Kenny, sorry.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pedro.
Aye.
Chris Darrow.
Aye.
David Winters.
The motion has been passed five to zero.
And Greg, did you second?
No, I did.
You did. Thank you. I'm sorry. It wasn't paying any. Pretty now.
Next up is comment from the public. I have a request to speak from Mr. Wilson. Will you please come up to podium? How are you, Mr. Wilson?
Good. Thank you for having us. Sorry for North Wayne Street, you know, crowding the room, but we appreciate the opportunity to speak. My wife Cheyenne, my name is Shawn Wilson. I live at 266 North Wayne Street. And my wife Cheyenne shared with you all an email about a parking ordinance that has been discovered. And just in the email says, "We would like to have that ordinance looked at and hopefully removed." It was written in 1989, and we believe that it has just kind of a dated lifestyle to it. And so, we would love to have parking on North Wayne Street from North Street down to Columbia. And on, I think we want parking on the west side as it is already on North Wayne from 36 down to North Street.
Okay.
And then, just to honor everybody waiting out in the hallway, should we leave tonight knowing that we'll come back to another meeting to have this discussed? Or should we stay present tonight in case that is a discussion?
What do you think about that, Mark?
It's purely the council's decision. No matter what you do, as far as your discussion is concerned, it's going to have to come back to you in the form of an ordinance if you choose to look at this further. If you choose to take no action, then there'll be no secondary meeting. But if you choose to have the staff do research and look into it, it will come back to you in a secondary meeting.
Okay, so you're the only one speaking for the group right now?
Correct.
All right, well, thank you for your thoughts. I think what we'll do is we'll think about it and... Yes?
I have a voting.
Go ahead.
Would you come up to the microphone, please? I'm sorry. And state your names.
Hi, my name's Chad Leisner. I live at two, or 302 North Street, which is right on the corner of Wayne here. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. It is an old policy, but I've lived there for 24 years, and as far as I know, there's never been parking down Wayne Street from north to Lawton. Probably partly because it's a very narrow street. When you get down there, it's only two cars wide when there are cars parked on that side, then you're only one strip wide. We are so close to the park, there are children on bicycles, there's people jogging, people walking their dogs. It's very congested, and this road just keeps getting busier. As the park gets nicer, it's used even more. An example, I mean, you would think the children are taught to watch out for the cars, but I sit on my porch and I watch them go through that intersection without looking. I said something to one girl one time, "You need to slow down, watch, look both ways. These cars don't slow down, and they don't see you." She said, "I'm fine, I've got reflectors on my bicycle." So, my point, and it's also a little selfish on my part, I live on that corner. When there are cars parked on Wayne Street, people are driving into my yard to avoid those parked cars. The snowplow shaved into my yard about that far and shaved the top off, and I had to re-sod a little bit. So that's why I'm pushing for the law to just stay as it is. I think changing it endangers a lot of young children and people using this road. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just a minute. Just a side comment, I have snow problems as well, but I went and bought the sticks. They only cost a couple bucks. And if you stick the sticks between the road and your dirt, they won't do it.
I believe they'll still run over the sticks because they need to. It's that or sideswipe a car.
Oh, I don't think so. They're very good. Anyways.
Okay. I would like you guys to look into it if you think about changing it.
I don't think they're sloppy snowplowers. They're very good. They've been at it a long time.
All right. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I've put folders in front of all of you with the correspondence from the Wilsons and Mr. Leisners, so you've got every correspondence I've had, you've got copies of it, so.
Any thoughts from the council? I have some thoughts, but anybody want to say anything?
The only thought that I had is, I looked into this a little bit too, and you're correct, it is, the ordinance does say there's no parking there. The only thoughts that I had is if that's where we choose to stay, then I think we need to make sure we have the proper signage out there, because there is no signage. I think further north on Wayne Street, there is signage that says no parking. But I would be open to at least hearing a discussion. We've heard a little bit from each side, but then also from the safety personnel to see, you know, what they would think about that, you know, emergency personnel and things of that nature. Because obviously, safety's got to be priority number one right there.
So I took a drive down a couple of different times down there, and you can actually, as you're headed down or north on Wayne, you can actually see the road continue to get narrower, you know, the further you get towards Columbia and then on to Lawton, it even gets even, even more narrow. I would imagine that there'd be a hard, anybody would be hard pressed that if you have a car parked even on the west side, to be able to get around those. So I'd probably, you know, consider allowing that ordinance to stay as it is.
Madam Vice President, council members, me and Chief Roberts went down Monday. We took several measurements. Most of the roads in town on average are around 24-foot or 22-foot wide. When you get down to the area in question that we're talking about tonight, it actually gets down towards about 20-foot, 21-foot. So it is a lot narrow. One of you guys made a comment just a minute ago about it being more narrow, and it definitely is. We talked to a couple of the residents that are here present tonight, just to see what they was thinking about, and then they said they was going to come to the meeting and address you guys. But we did do some measurements, and that's what we did find.
Okay, thanks, chief. Mark, I'd like to do this at the next meeting? Put something together? And we'll bring it up on an agenda item the next meeting. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, everybody. All right. Next on the agenda is requests to waiver fees. Kevin?
Assistant President. With you. I'm sorry. If it's all right with you, I'm going to let the assistant town manager spearhead this, only because I do sit on the sheriff's merit board, and since this is for the construction of a new jail, I know I'm not a voting member, but I feel just out of just pure clarity that I think Will should go ahead and take the lead.
Understand fully, Mark.
Yes, sir.
You just sit out. Will? Do you have anything to say after, Mark?
I think Kevin's there and then...
Okay, Kevin. It's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Kevin Cavanon, the facilities manager for Henderson County Government. Our offices are at 355 South Washington. My office is Suite G20 at Henderson County Government Center Building here in Danville. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. And I'm here on behalf of the county commissioners to respectfully request a waiver of fees pertaining to our pending new jail project. And the fees we were asked for consideration for are general plan review as well as any utility tap fees, basically any fees associated with the development of this type. And if you'd like, if you don't mind me taking a couple of minutes, I could show you a little bit about the project that we're talking about.
Go ahead.
(inaudible).
Kevin, make sure you can in the mic.
Thank you. The site that we are planning to develop on is the old fairgrounds site that we refer to as our east campus area. And it is north of the animal shelter, to the east of work release, east of the jail, south of the National Guard Armory, and south of the new substation that's been put in. And as you can see from this site plan, it basically takes up all of that area. In conjunction with this project, we plan to extend the roadway from where it deadends by the animal shelter up to the extent of the roadway that's being put in, in conjunction with the new power substation. The new jail is basically a two-story structure, and I do have some elevations to share with you, but I'm going to get a few facts straight here. The current jail, which started in 1974, holds a maximum of 252 people, at least that's what it's rated for, and I can tell you it can hold more. Fortunately, it is not right now. It's about 50,000 square foot structure, and, you know, has had a couple of additions over those years. The new jail will hold a maximum of 574 occupants, and it is about 150,000 square feet. It has two major cell blocks in it. It contains all the administrative area for the sheriff and his staff, which includes detectives, road deputies, training facilities, evidence storage, vehicle storage, vehicle impound, and there are other storage areas that they need to support all of their operations. This building would have a six-inch water main tap for domestic service, a six-inch fire tap. It would also have a two-inch domestic service for its vehicle service building, and a three-inch fire service tap for that building, and it would have an eight-inch sanitary sewer. The site takes up about 14 acres. This area in front, the angled part is really the admin offices, where the day-to-day office functions and all of the different staff do their function. The large rectangular area in the middle is the two cell blocks, and that is a two-story area. And then, the rectangular area to the east, still in white, is the central service core. And we're designing this facility with the likelihood that it will expand to two additional cell blocks to the east in that area at some point in time. Someone else will be here before you to talk about that one. But with that in mind, the central core houses all of the book-in and check-in, the medical facility, laundry, kitchen, and all the main service areas, and that's located in the middle so that it could be equidistant from the other blocks when those are eventually built. We have public parking on the west side of the building and south side of the building that's separated from the staff parking. All the staff parking for the jail deputies, the road staff, and their office staff is on the north side of the building, and it's security separated from the rest of the facility. And then, the light green area you see to the east is for outdoor staging in case the building needs to be evacuated. We need to provide area for that. So, the rest of the site and utilities, as well as drainage, is designed to support the future expansion of the additional two cell blocks. Any questions on the site?
Is that long-term? Like, if somebody got 10 years, would they stay there?
That would be more like a state prison type of sentence. That would be very long for a jail sentence, although, and I'm not the expert in jail operations, but their length of stay has been increasing over time. But 10 years would be more like a regular state or federal prison sentence.
So there's a difference in definition between jail and prison?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like it. And what would be the normal stay in the jail like that?
Well, I think that the sheriff has talked about, they've had one person that's been there probably about 16 months, and it could be anywhere from a matter of days to weeks or months.
Okay, thank you. Need the M.A. answer about the site?
Sir? Right now, an illustration of the planned front of the building that houses the admin office area, you know, the general functions, non-secure jail functions. That would, there's also, that would be the public entrance. We've actually filed all of our plans, I think, through the town already for our, all development plan reviews, as well as a variance for landscaping, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. We're trying to match or emulate some of the style of the classic buildings in the area and throughout the rest of the town. These are a little bit difficult to see at distance, but those are the traditional four-side building elevations. There's the front, which faces east campus boulevard, or basically the west elevation. South elevation, which would face the animal shelter. North elevation, which would face the back of the armory. And that's the east elevation, which would face the additional undeveloped property that the county has on the east side of the pending road extension.
Is there a rating on this? Like, you've got supermax prisons, you've got other kind of jails. Is there like a, this is a really secure jail of a seven, or this is just a general lockup of, you know what I mean?
I can say that it's not a supermax, but I don't have the experience to give it another rating.
Okay.
We're using a modular cell system that is probably like anything, maybe unlike something you've seen. And it allows the jail to operate with less staffing than what they would in a traditional cell block situation. It's very, it's pretty fascinating how it goes together, and I'm sure we'll have a chance to talk more about that when we go through the rest of the development plans. But as a jail goes, it's a, it's a pretty awesome structure, actually.
Okay, thank you.
So we are asking for consideration to waive those fees, and earlier, Mr. President, you asked about what we might be able to do as the county for the town. I don't know how to answer that. I could certainly take a request to the commissioners, that's something I normally do, but I can talk a little bit about things that we have done or feel that we have done in the past. I think most notably would be the property acquisition for your fire department, Station 192, I believe it is. We don't have, unfortunately, a big file of information that I could share with you on that, but I was able to look through and indeed, it looks like it was transferred in 2000 for a dollar. And if anyone has different information, I'd love to know about it, but that's the best information that I could have from our records. We also, you know, continually support town efforts and other efforts on and around the Courthouse Square property. I'm very involved in most of those things and trying to make sure that our services match up with what events being held. That's always a good thing. I've personally always been very sympathetic to that, because I think the town does a great job of promoting things and using that square. So that's something I personally would like to see, and very happy to cooperate with that. But also recently, the county's cooperated with right-of-way grants for the roundabout at fairgrounds, and also established an additional easement for water line extension and sanitary sewer line coming into the fairgrounds property along County Road 200. Most of that, when that property was established, there was no right-of-way there, because the property and the road was county property, so there was no right-of-way established for that, and easements needed to be created to allow the utility extensions, both for the water and the sewer. That's a recap, quick recap of some of the things that I could find that we've done, and I was, you know, feel comfortable saying for the commissioners that are always interested in finding ways to cooperate. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How much money are you looking for?
I'm not sure.
How much money will we give you?
I'm not sure what all the tap fees and fees are.
I think that's an important thing here.
Mm-hmm.
Is it $1,000? Are we talking about $100 grand?
I've not been able to calculate the tap fees. Was not able to find that information on your website.
Does anybody here have an idea?
Matt and Jerry, and Courtney, I can assist you.
Would you like to come up here, please?
A single six-inch sanitary line would be $100,000. And then, he's talked about some additional taps for different buildings. The six-inch water meters are $48,000 each. I think he's calling for two of those. Just while I'm up here, we're thrilled to have the jail. They're a great customer, they always pay, they're steady. We work well with the county, they've helped us out. We also help them out by checking the lift station at the fairgrounds. We work well together. The only concern I have is, we have to pump the waste from the inmates across the creek, and we all know how expensive those pumps are. I've heard stories of the inmates flushing anything and everything, including other inmates, so.
(laughing).
It's your choice. I would recommend, like, financing, possibly. That's what we did with the landfill, just as an option. But it's ultimately up to you guys on the wastewater side. I'll let Matt speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Jerry on this. I do know the tap fee for that six-inch water meter is $48,000, plus the price of the meter. Well, how many others? You say a two-inch and a three-inch also, or is it another six?
Domestic. Six-inch domestic and a three-inch domestic, the two-inch domestic and the three-inch.
I don't remember what the price is on for a tap fee on a two-inch. I do remember looking at the six-inch, because I kind of figured that's what size would be. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money. That's going to put a lot, a lot more load on our, our infrastructure and our plant. I'm with Jerry on this 100%.
Matt, did you say 48,000 or 148,000? 40,000?
I don't know what, probably a couple thousand dollars for a six-inch meter, two or three thousand.
So between the two, we're already at a quarter of a million if I heard Jerry right.
That's correct.
I don't know what the two-inch is off the top of my head. I don't know. I got it in my office. I got it for you, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else from our town want to make a comment? Will?
I think Mayor. I, um, pulling square footage is how much? So you're looking at $400 plus 10 cents a square foot, so that equates to about $15,000 building permit-wise. I'm not opposed to waiving the building permit fees. It's not unusual to have that with other municipalities, as far as waiving those fees. The tap fees are a little bit different, because they are large amounts. That's a large amount, and that's a big impact, but I'm not opposed to waiving building permit fees, because Courthouse is a focal point of the town, and I look at the jail as an asset to the town, not necessarily the opposite. So that's my take on the building part of it. It is a little bit of money, but we have partnered in the past, and in the past with the courthouse and in the jail itself, every remodel they've done, they've, they've gotten the appropriate permits and paid those dues, those fees. So I'm not opposed to waiving the building permit fees specifically, so that's just my take on it.
Thank you. Lisa?
That's the fees for filing for plan, ECA, they have to go through design. We're talking, so I don't have any. In comparison.
Anybody else? Yep.
There are pass-through fees that our engineer, the town's engineer, that our engineer would look at the site plan, those I'm definitely not in favor of waiving, because that's a direct cost to the town. Just want to bring that up.
Kevin, with the, with the expansion of the, of the jail, will there be an additional number of employees staffed?
The staffing will go minimally, because of the way that we're able to construct the cell blocks themselves, and there's going to be natural growth over time as the population grows in response. You know, it needs to be met for that. But I think on opening day, we're anticipating three additional staff over what's at the jail right now. Regarding the fees, if I may, I certainly understand for the meters, you know, that is a hard cost to the town for materials. I would question or ask for consideration on the tap fees. We are not going to create a new load, we're going to replace the existing load. The existing jail, you know, will not be in operation when this starts. We typically use 800,000 to maybe a million gallons of water a month at the jail facility. We spend approximately $100,000 a year on our water and sewer utility bill. And, you know, I can understand the cost for materials that we need to use, it has to come from the town, but I'm not sure, you know, that it's, it's not a new service. It's a replacement of an existing service. I realize it is a large service, but I would ask for your consideration as a replacement of existing.
Yes.
Don't know what size meter is currently in there, so whatever size it is, and you got upsized to, say, a six from a three, you just pay the difference.
Thank you. Kevin, what happens to the old building? Who is, who's going to tear that down? Are you going to leave it up?
That's a very good question.
Are we going to make you tear it down, and you're going to pay for it?
Well, I hope that you'll make us tear it down. I hope we will voluntarily tear it down. That's my recommendation to the commissioners. We have not reached a conclusion on that. The jail structure itself, in my opinion, is not really suitable for rehab as anything else. That building has some intrudent infrastructure problems, and you would spend significant money just to get to ground zero to start to make improvements there. And this is the same speech that I've shared from my position with my bosses, the county commissioners. So, we have not made a decision on that, but it will not operate as a jail once the new one is open. There's possibility we may continue some office function there, because we need more office space today. So in two years or so, when this is done, I'm sure that we will probably need more, but I do not see that as a long-term office facility, even in the administrative area.
Sounds like it's just going to be derelict there.
No, because, well, again, I can't say for sure, but my recommendation and our thinking right now is that it would be demolished. There's a better use for that land that the county may find than an empty, unused, still expensive to maintain and secure building. So to me, from my position as a facilities manager who'd have the responsibility for that, it makes no sense to me, keep it. Now, we're not there yet, and we do not have that decision made yet, so I can't, you know, commit to that happening, but that is from my office, that's the intent.
Great.
Kevin, do, do you have a, maybe a breakdown on, on the construction of the new building as to what percentage of contractors and things will be local versus?
No, I don't. We're not there yet.
Okay.
Our architects are QAW Corporation, and we're using the construction manager as constructor method for delivery, and we have a contract with Darmon Construction Services for that. And then, they will develop the pricing as we go along, and then solicit, you know, multiple bids for the subcontractors. We still have purview over that, but during the preliminary bidding phase, they develop a contract price for us, and then they have to fit the contractors to match, basically. But I'm not sure who that would be. We have several in the area that we'd like to recommend, but it will be dependent upon pricing.
Before, go ahead.
Maybe we could take some time to work with Kevin and come back with some options for you, and see if we can't... It sounds like the utilities are willing to work with Kevin, but we need to find out, you know, let's compare apples to apples. Maybe we bring you back two options, then kind of go from there. Are you okay with that, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
With that? Good? It's up to you.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it's a good idea to come back with a couple of different options.
Yeah, I think it's the right way to go. There's too many variables in this, and it's a lot of money. It's very interesting to me, we have two government bodies that are trying to fight over some money, that certain stuff's ours and certain stuff's yours, and the amounts of money we're talking about are very large here for us. And I think we should put a little bit more time into it. So I agree with Will and the rest of the councilmen. Will come back with maybe some options? Or maybe not?
That's fine. I'd certainly, you know, be happy to work with everybody on that. I do appreciate your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you have a timeline on that? Like, when you need to know?
We, if everything goes right on our side of things, we anticipate maybe breaking ground in August and doing some preliminary site work. So yes, we do have time, and, you know, I think that the commissioners are certainly willing to consider, you know, and be appreciative of any consideration that we can get, so I'd be happy to...
Before the next meeting, if that's a possibility, to get on the agenda. Thank you.
I just have something.
For design review, uh, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. I don't have a, we haven't collected any money. I don't have any problem not collecting money until they, but the applications have been filed. So by the time they come back to you, they'll have already been heard by.
Hey, thank you, Lisa. Is that it from everybody? Okay, just for the record, we're going to go back, look at some options. And the next meeting, if that's not too short, we'll come back with options and we'll vote on them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is B, request for street closure. Dwayne Lane.
I just hope to be here. Um, we are doing a remodel project and building. We tore down the house. It was burnt down on Jefferson Street. We're getting ready to, uh, tear down the house on Cross Street at 297 South Cross, which is on the corner of Cross and Hill. And, um, so we're building, uh, five new duplexes down there on that corner. And, uh, it's going to make that corner look really good. And, uh, we need to cut Mill Street to get sewer for the three, that the, on, the one on Mill Street and the two on Cross Street. And the sewer main is, from my understanding, is on the far south side of Mill Street. So when we cut that, we will have to close the road down, uh, ideally for one day. It could take longer than that, but we should, we normally can get it done one day. Um, and so they'll need to close that street down. So they've asked me to come here to ask permission from the town council to allow us to cut the street and shut it down for, uh, the time, a period, period of time, whatever it takes to do that construction.
Sounds logical. I hear you're going to change your name to the Danville Building Corporation.
I hadn't thought about that.
I am smiling.
I'll see if that's taken.
All right. Any discussion is from the, uh, councilman?
Dwayne, you, you, sorry. You said that was on West Mill. Let's, you want to, need to close?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Will that closure affect the delivery?
There's one house on Mill Street just east on the south side. And we're going to be cutting just to the east of where that guy's driveway is. The tenants of Justin Dorsey that lives in the duplexes that are south of Mill will have to come in on Jefferson during the time of construction. We'll be cutting between that house driveway and Justin Dorsey's driveway in between there. So it'll be in between them two drives. So they'll be inconvenienced to drive around the block to go in off Jefferson if they come in off of Cross Street at this time.
Have you communicated with that person that it's going to be inconvenienced? Are those people?
We haven't yet. Uh, when we get permission, we, we plan on if everything goes well to, uh, we gotta get approval from Ray, is to do it on Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday, this coming Tuesday after Labor, our Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lane, councilman. Any discussion on this? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, allow for, uh, closure of, uh, West Mill Street for, uh, Dwayne Lane.
Got a second?
Second.
Danny, could you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Uh, motion's been passed, five to zero. Next on the agenda is economic stimulus. I opened up the floor to some conversation about this.
So, um, Greg and Will, Mark and I met to discuss, um, what opportunities we could possibly offer the small businesses in the town of Danville that have been affected by the coronavirus. Um, after doing, I have sent you guys, you know, several reports. Um, this was really bounced around last week. So I've given, you know, as much information in the amount of time that, that I can. But, um, we had discussed among, um, our group that we of course want to do something. We, we want to help. And the downtown Danville Partnership, along with the Danville Chamber are working together. Are you, you're involved, right, Kelly? Okay, you're, okay, I'm sorry, Kelly's not involved. So the downtown partnership is offering grants that these, you guys had helped pass at the last meeting. So we would like to, um, do something as the town of Danville. I'll bring forth to you the proposal to do something. Um, this is, if you speak with financial advisors across the state of Indiana and you speak with attorneys across the state of Indiana, the recommendation is not to do anything. We have to operate it as a business and we have to take care of ourselves. And we, it may be, as, as I've been saying since this happened, a year before we see the true impact. Uh, everything speculation still as property taxes are coming in. But it's also important that restaurants stay open and our small businesses stay open and that our square is full of businesses and restaurants. So having said that and speaking with Chul and the management team, um, my recommendation is to offer twenty thousand from the Edit Fund and to offer twenty thousand from the Host Fund. Um, Kelly has very graciously, Kelly Di Benedetto with the Danville Chamber, she's the director, has, um, very graciously offered to go through the grant application process for us and to work with myself and the management team, um, to review those. Um, Will and I have stayed in constant contact. You ended up with fifteen for the partnership, ten, ten. So the, the partnership received ten grants. So Kelly and I spoke today and, uh, you know, we may get a few more, um, because the partnership's more focused on the square where we would encompass, you know, the old farm area and, and everything within the town limits that we service. So that is my recommendation to start with. Now, of course, we can review this. We can see how many applications we receive. Another discussion that's been brought up this afternoon is do we look at nonprofits and how do we, do we do anything for them? So there's just been lots of things. I asked Kelly to attend this evening. If you guys have questions, then she's going to start, you know, the grant process with us with, upon your guys' approval. But I, I can't say enough as the, um, fiscal officer for the town of Danville, we have to think of ourselves. And we have to think, if this impacts us, you know, are we going to be able to give raises to our employees, you know, and, but if we help the businesses and, and just the whole big picture, as I know each one of you look at. So I, I want to say that. And I just want to say, and, and Chul and I have talked several hours, I think, in the last two days about this. So, um, I, I'll open it for discussion between you guys.
May I, okay. So, uh, when Greg, you brought this to me a week or two ago and I, I liked the idea just on the surface. And I think the comment I made, as long as we could cross the Ts, dot the Is and no issues with legal, I think we'd be all right. Um, I'm a CPA, so I think about things a little more in depth after the fact. The thing that, that is, I guess here's my thought. Um, are we in a position where we're going to pick winners and losers as a town? Because forty thousand is not a lot of money when you think about it. It's a lot to us, but it's not a lot to, to businesses. So are we, are we in the position of picking winners and losers at that point? Um, and I could even make that argument on the national level, but that's not what we're here for. Um, the, then, taking that thought, then if, if attorneys across the state and financial advisors across the state are advising against this for small, especially for small towns like us, then what, even in the face of that advice, what has caused us to go ahead and make the recommendation to shell out forty grand, especially considering what you just referenced a second ago or someone did about the property taxes? We don't know where we're going to be two, three, four, five months from now. Um, I think it's a great idea to let the businesses know that, hey, we've got your, we've got your back on this, but we're effectively taking their money from everybody and shelling it out to ten, twelve, fifteen businesses. So I don't know. I, I, I guess I don't have a yes or a no leaning on that. I just think those are questions we really have to ask. And I, I guess from a numbers standpoint, I would say maybe not. Maybe it's not a good idea. I mean, I think it'd be great if we could, but those are my thoughts.
So to answer your question, um, and, and Mr. Pato and I spoke Sunday evening in, in detail about this. Um, I was against it to begin with. Um, of, Mark and I both, we had great concerns. Um, I, I was not, as big as I support the businesses in this town, I did not agree with it. Um, but when I looked at the big picture and I see what's happening Clayton Cafe, I see restaurants around the county that have closed and small businesses. It's just not restaurants, small businesses, the, you know, photographers and, and, you know, boutiques that haven't been able to stay open. It also affects us in the big picture. When you look at empty buildings, we already have Diesel's empty. We have Raiders Fabric empty. We have the Steinway Building empty. That also affects us because that's property taxes we're not collecting. That's economic development income and, and, you know, just the big picture. Those are things that are, you know, and to lose other restaurants and, and our big push and the director for the chamber and, and several of you sitting up here, our goal this year, and I know I speak for Mark, as that was part of him becoming town manager, is it's important to us to bring economic development to our community. It's very important to us. And I know in this very small percentage of meetings that I've attended on this subject, they look at, okay, well, why do you have all these restaurants empty? Why? I mean, that's the first question. When I, the last meeting I sat in, I was asked, well, you have three restaurants sitting empty. One of them is smack dab on thirty-six. So when you look at, when, that's my flip side and, and Chul and I had that discussion. That's my flip side of, of that. And, and I have a bleeding, compassionate heart to, to a fault. And, you know, I don't want to see small mom and pop restaurants that have been here for thirty years close.
Can I have one follow-up comment to that? Uh, so I, I guess, have we lost any businesses because of this, restaurants specifically? Um, and kind of the, the parenthetical thought to that is, um, now that we're starting to open ever so slowly, but we're opening, theoretically they're getting more business. Um.
Restaurants are, are limited to, I believe, twenty-five or fifty percent capacity at the time. Fifty percent capacity.
So I can tell you that I've spoke with a couple of restaurant owners. Mark could answer this way better than I can because he's been out in person. There are two restaurants in Danville that are pushing the limits. I think that's fair to say. I know that there's several that have borrowed against their credit lines. Um, you know, it's none of my business. And, and, you know, I know you're not asking that, but how they run their restaurant and how much money they have as savings that, you know, if they're living paycheck to paycheck. So Mark can probably answer that better than I can. But I do know for a fact, there are two that are struggling.
The only business I know of, um, and it depends on who you ask, uh, um, and speaking with the owner, I believe Heat and Cool, uh, was in a situation that this became a problem. Now, um, there's, it just depends on what day you talk to him, you know. But when he first said, when he first announced he was closing the store, he said it was because of this. But I don't know if that's a fact or not.
He, he just got bought out.
He did. He got bought out. Yeah. But he was, he was waiting to sell because, again, the story that I had been told is that things were bleak. So, but I don't know.
Potential applicants.
Kelly, do you know how many businesses there are?
Total in Danville?
I don't know.
By the partnership, there's two, you know, really the foot traffic. All are cool. Kind of help those people we need. This one's looking to go.
Yeah, I, I think that.
Narrow the pool by having some of that.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, speaking of the criteria is that, you know, and part of the application process would be that, you know, an individual applying for this, and I, and this could be subjective and I understand, but that they would have to have an, you know, had to receive some kind of an impact, you know, uh, during this, you know, Corona season that we've had. Um, you, you know, take, because our, our businesses in Danville are, are a bit more diverse than just the, um, you know, foot traffic businesses, uh, that are in the downtown partnership, you know, zone. You know, I was also looking at, you know, uh, businesses that were considered trades, manufacturing, maybe even professional services and even some nonprofits. I mean, because those nonprofits are also employers. Uh, those employees, you know, that, that could also have been affected, you know, are, are paying, you know, uh, could be paying property taxes. They could be paying, I mean, they're paying payroll taxes, you know, things like that. Um, my next comment is not directed towards any, any, uh, attorney or, or specific financial advisor, but, uh, as you had mentioned about attorneys and financial advisors across the state that are recommending that, uh, that, that we don't do this, may be slightly self-serving to where they would still interested in collecting their fees. So I'm, I got to, uh, you know, weigh that, you know, it could be a self-preservation mechanism for them to say, don't give it away. Give it to us instead. So just consider, consider that as you're weighing some of these options. Um, I think that the use of the, you know, uh, and I appreciate Kelly Di Benedetto's, uh, willingness as a Chamber of Commerce to, to assist us in this, um, you know, in this, uh, manner. I think that, um, you know, Tom and I've had conversations about, you know, making, making things fair. I, I think that there's, you know, there's, there, there are people out there that, you know, in businesses that have been impacted and there's other, you know, companies and businesses that, you know, haven't been impacted or, you know, uh, would realize, I would hope that, that, um, you know, not applying may benefit those who were impacted more, you know. And, um, you know, and that, you know, us finding, you know, money available that we could use towards this, uh, I'll say project, you know, would be, you know, uh, not saying that we have to spend or give it all away, but up to, I think would be, uh, you know, an important factor. And then maybe just see what, uh, what, you know, kind of interest or applications that we receive. And then we can, uh, you know, make some either adjustments and, uh, along the way. May I make one?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, you'll forgive the, uh, the, the comparison, but the criteria, which I don't, I haven't seen yet. I don't know what we're going to require then. Um, I gotta be careful how I say this, but i- if anyone's familiar with the PPP loan, which is, uh, part of the CARES Act that was in response to the coronavirus, um, I know that there have been, seen some things nationally where organizations have, you know, not been completely upfront with, do they really need the money? And, um, so I guess before we just give away, and I, maybe we can see that and see what that criteria is. Um, I know that at least in that national level, there were businesses that were trying to take advantage of that situation. And the, the federal government just announced that if, if your loan was less than two million dollars, we're not going to worry about auditing you. So you just got, you know, your, your free loan right there. So, um, I, I don't know. I just, that would be my only thing too, is, is making sure we're giving it to businesses that actually need it. And I don't know who this next question would be to, maybe the attorney, but is this common right now across the state of Indiana with small governments, small-town governments trying to inject into the economy?
Um, common, it, it is not uncommon. I don't know that it is the majority of people or towns who are doing this. Uh, there are a lot of communities that are considering financial aid grants and things of that nature. Um, a lot of them, and to be honest, right now, are, are struggling a little bit because there were initial conversations that the CARES Act would have money that would come through. So the five hundred, um, billion dollars were, Indiana got four point eight, four point three billion, no, four point eight billion of it. Um, and then the governor has pushed three hundred, that, three hundred million down to the local communities. Originally, there was discussion that those dollars could include economic development help. There's a specific prohibition from the Indiana Finance Authority that says you cannot give that money towards that. It has to be utilized towards PPE type situations. So your hand sanitizers, your mask, overtime to respond to COVID, um, money spent on getting your IT up to staff to get people working from remote locations. Those sorts of things are allowable. And so the rules keep on changing. And you mentioned the PPP through there. I mean, the rules change. rules change halfway through to the point where they have had three, I think, three safe harbor provisions now, which is, okay, well, we'll give you until this date to make sure you need it, and then they realize something else, so then they push that date back and then they push that date back. And those safe harbor provisions are to keep yourself from getting, being prosecuted or loans and fraudulent loans. So I know that's a long-winded way to answer your question, but it's, yes, there are, and if I can just say one little thing to Council Ben Lear's question. I couldn't let that go to air. Just for the record, and Mark, Mark can verify this, there, I actually said that there are situations where you are better off pay, could pay a different individual to resolve the situation than pay me for that and.
And I fell out of my chair.
But, so I, I can see that, I can understand that. I would tell you that the, when you talk about the financial analysts, they're going to get their money regardless, because most of them are paid out of the bond proceeds, things of that nature, so that, I don't, I don't see that being the impetus there. I think the biggest thing that when you're looking at, when you're talking about the attorneys and the financial analysts making the recommendations to sit on the money is this, and this has to be considered in your decision-making. I do not live in the town of Danville. I do not represent the citizens of the town of Danville. Your financial advisors, for the most case, do not live in the town of Danville. I don't live in the towns and cities that I represent. And so it is, I am removed from that personal connection to these individual business owners. And so that does two things. One, I think it allows me to make an objective recommendation to you, looking at the saying, you really need to think about what is the overall good that you can provide to your citizens. Your duty is to all of the citizens of Danville and not just the ones that are hurting at a certain time. And so because of that, you have to balance it out. I can give that kind of recommendation, but at the same time, I am detached from being here on the ground all the time and tied to the community. That's not to say I don't love the town of Danville, it's I don't live here. And so I, I think that is the bigger impetus when you see attorneys and FAs across the state, they're trying to look at it objectively, saying, you need, we don't know what is going to happen to your revenues. Jenny mentioned the, the property taxes, well, it's just not, and I went through this last week, so I won't belabor it too much, it's not just those property taxes, remember, it's your local road and street money, it's going to be the casino money, it's going to be the lit, so the local income tax, that's going to hit next year and the year after because it's collected in, in the year behind. So there's a whole bunch of things. That being said, the town of Danville has some things that no other communities have, like the host fund. I mean, I think everybody would love to have that side, type of situation. I know that we looked at some other funds regarding this, one of them being the rainy day, and you know, Jenny and I talked about that, and when you created that rainy day fund, while that has a good balance in it, the enabling ordinance did not contemplate usage in this type of way, and so those funds can't be used that way unless you go back and you change that ordinance. So, but you do have, you do have some things out there, but it's just kind of that balance, so.
Jewel, despite my comments, I still love you, brother. One of the things that we had looked at, and it came out from our meeting, I think, not this last Monday, but the Monday before, was, you know, economic development, you know, that they utilize, utilizing some of the money from economic development, you know, we, we are, you know, we are, you know, there are businesses that are suffering, you know, from an economic standpoint. So I think that the use of economic development dollars would be appropriate to be used, you know, for, you know, for that. You know, I, I'm, I'm always critical of the host fund, meaning that I don't want to ever spend that money, but I, I, you know, we do. You know, but I also thought that, you know, from the standpoint of the host to be for, you know, the greater good of the community, you know, and, and I'm always forgetting the name of this, quality of life is that, you know, and, and to use a restaurant as an example, but if, if a, if a, another restaurant were to leave Danville, I think it would really impact everyone in this room's quality of life. It would jack up your food rotation. I mean, it's, where, where do you go? Where can I go and get a drink or, or a burger or whatever, you know, so, you know, and some of the businesses that have been applying and receiving some of the grant money and getting blowback, you know, from, you know, I mean, these are, you know, large, large conglomerate, you know, type of companies and, you know, I mean, I would, I would always be welcome to have some of those businesses in, in the, the Danville proper, you know, but a lot of the businesses that, that we, that we utilize in town, that are headquartered in town, you know, are, are ran by your friends, by your neighbors, you know, by, by people that, you know, you're sitting next to at the restaurant. And, and again, you know, right now, you know, I don't like the word stimulus, I prefer impact, economic impact, but you know, the, the thing is, is that, you know, again, we're seeing businesses being impacted by the state of affairs.
And I'll add, I contacted Ben Comer yesterday, he's the president of the Redevelopment Commission, to ask him how he would feel. He reached out to the Redevelopment Commission. We emailed back and forth and spoke today. They are, they voted favorably to the $20,000 if the council approved it. So I just wanted to let you know that I did speak with Ben and he reached out to, and Lisa as well. So I just wanted you to know, we do have their blessing, that if this is something you guys do vote on, that we do have their blessing. We budgeted for 2020 $100,000 for professional services for the economic development and the new Tiff district that we did establish and are working through this year. It is so hard to tell if they're going to spend that whole $100,000. They had planned to spend the whole $100,000, of course, like all of us, you know, that they're pushed back two or three months, which may lead into 2021. If for some reason, you know, we, we turn this around very fast in the economy and we, we can get things done, that $20,000 will be gone. So that's something that we would then have to look at as the council and myself is, then we would dip into the cash fund, which is the reports that I've prepared for you guys and are in front of you this evening. So that's something to think about. You have until October 31st to do, well, about December, anyway, and to do additional appropriations. So we would have to look at that because that would be money that wouldn't be budgeted because our other edit expenditure funds, we spend those 100%, it's liability insurance, it's payroll for one patrolman, and so there's no wiggle room in those accounts. So if we're able to get everything done, that the commission is their goals for the year, that's something that you guys do need to think about. We're in very good shape with our cash reserve ballots in the edit fund, and I gave you guys those numbers in front of you. But you do, I mean, it's like everything else, we have to look at the big picture. And like Jewel referenced, it's going to affect in 2021 and 2022 and maybe 2023, this whole thing. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna see this for two or three years for sure. And to answer your question, David, as of noon yesterday, the state of Indiana, with the information that I could obtain, and Kelly helped me here, 32.48 towns and cities in the state of Indiana have assisted the small businesses in their community. So about 30% to give you an idea, as of yesterday at noon. And Kelly pulled up some, was that today or probably yesterday's numbers as well? So, and there, what Kelly produced for me was, we don't know how long this is going to go, and you've referenced that, David. I've heard a lot of talk in the meetings that I've been in with the clerks and treasurers across the state of Indiana, and you meet with your businesses, there's word that we're going to go through this again in August or September and October because another wave's going to come through and, and we may be where we are now. I think it says like 52% of businesses say they won't make it if that happens. So this is all speculation, but it's all things that we have to think about because at the end of the day, and we all say this, we're a business, we're a government entity, but we're still running a business here.
Okay, anybody else? I'd like to say something. Kenny is right. Our job up here is fiscal responsibility. We have defined departments that we supply to the town, water, sewers, police, fire, all the things the town can't do by themselves. And we try to govern our monies that they give us properly through all those divisions. The problems I see with this is we really don't have a department head for giveaway money. We have areas that we help Chamber of Commerce and the Partnership, which we hope they try to do things that in general help the town. I feel it's so complicated and the variables unknown for the future are really large. The amount of money we're talking about to me is very small. It's very large as an individual payment, which if you want to talk about that, an individual payment to us as a town is a good thing. But to take the money and give it to the whole town or try to make the town benefit from it, I think that'd be almost impossible. How do you do this? How do you say that guy's been running his business terrible anyways? And this guy has been working real hard and he's been frugal. I feel that in the beginning, the government got in there, and I know a couple of businesses that got loans, one guy for $100,000, another guy for $60,000, and they probably won't have to pay that back. So there was a bit of money in the beginning there for people. I am not involved in that and I don't know how, if that was everybody or just certain sizes, but he has just a regular business here in town and he was very happy that he got 100 grand as an individual. Now that helped him immensely. So my feeling is that we should be prepared to run the town under the guidelines we have, under the people that are professionally that we've hired. I've tried to reorganize the town a little bit and stop this ego stuff of the fire department, police department, talk to me, the town manager runs the town and all the department heads talk to him. We're up here for the money, the fiscal responsibility. And so I feel, I feel it's not in our place to give that money out and from the, I know I've waffled back and forth before I talked to Greg, thought it was a good idea, we were starting at 100 grand, but after thinking about it, I think it's just not our deal. And I think we could better serve the town if we keep the money and get ready, if there is something in the future. So that's all I got to say.
I want to go back to where you said I was right.
Because Jenny was right in what she said.
It's on record.
That's right, I want that to be on record.
Let's double check the minutes on that.
Could you highlight that, Courtney?
This is the five people voting up here. Mostly everybody's given their opinion, is that right? Anybody else got anything to say?
I just wanted to make one last, maybe final comment was, you know, one of the aspects of, of bringing, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and into, into the loop was also to be able to collect data from those businesses that were impacted because that data could also be valuable to, to us as a town unit to be able to, in the future, apply for grants and things like that. So part of the aspect of maybe applying for that loan or, or grant, sorry, would be that it would be mandatory for them to, to fill out a survey that we would be able to use, you know, to possibly apply for our own grants, you know, from, from, you know, the state or, or federal. The, the feds have really done a, a, a good job of backstopping business. I mean, they got the CARES Act and things like that. Unfortunately, our federal government has really kind of hung us, us out to dry because there hasn't really been anything to, to backstop municipalities yet. There may be, there may be some other things that are in the works, but you know, again, I know we, I understand that we can't count on that, you know, as, as a possible backstop and that, you know, we do have to, you know, be healthy, you know, ourselves. But I, I wanted to let the council know that the collection of that data could be an important piece to, to this.
And I want to add to David's question. Mark and I, I think Greg and Kelly and I, when we met, we had discussed, there would be a committee formed and, and you guys would decide the criteria that they will have to meet to be considered. So I do want to answer that question, that if you guys do decide that you do want to do this, that, to answer, I don't know that that question got answered.
You're saying we could, the word, we could deny a request based upon not meeting certain criteria?
Correct.
So this would just basically authorize the money to be spent?
Correct.
But we may not, we may not spend a dime of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Exactly right.
All right.
I don't want, I don't want you guys to be under the impression that I'm saying, go spend $40,000 and just give it to whoever is requesting it. There would definitely be, you know, I, I don't know, this would be a question for Jewel, you know, if, if we can request a financial statement from them, year to date, month to date, is that something the Partnership did, Will?
Maybe that's too much government intrusion into a company.
I know it's a slippery slope.
Not socialists.
I mean, you can put whatever requirements on that you want to because you will be considering the donation of the money, giving them money. What I can tell you is that in communities, some other communities, part of the requirements, and this may go towards one of the things that you were saying, Council President Pato, was if you've received assistance from any other governmental entity, whether that be the federal government, the state government, or, or a county or whatever, that you did not qualify for that local contribution. And, I mean, this is, this is the fun thing about these sorts of meetings, you get to sit here and you get to think about things, and then when you have these discussions, new ideas can pop up. And so as I was sitting here listening to the discussions going on, it, it sounds like one of the bigger concerns that we have right here are, is the restaurants and the places who are serving people. We have a tranche of money right now for the town of Danville, which we have not budgeted, we have not appropriated, we're still trying to figure out how much you're going to be getting. But all of that money has come from the restaurants with the new food and beverage tax. Your limitation as to what the utilization of the food and beverage monies are for is for tourism-type projects. Keeping restaurants in business could, I could make that argument to the DLGF that that's something that, that falls into that consideration. You know, I, I know that Ann has been working diligently with Jenny to find out and, and we've gotten a lot of these things corrected, the, the state revenue portal is not the easiest thing to work. So I think we've got the vast majority of the restaurants figured out now so that the contributions are going to be more steady as to what's going to come in. But, I mean, that is something that you haven't budgeted against, you haven't pledged anywhere, and I.
We have.
You have?
We have.
Okay. Well, then you have, so never mind.
We, we, Will brought before the council to do some sidewalk analysis and engineering, and so we did, yes.
Okay. So forget that idea.
The food and beverage tax, are you saying use some of that for what we're talking about?
Well, I.
But wait, so.
In sitting here, I was thinking that this, that could be a tranche of money.
There hasn't been a lot of food and beverage being sold.
Well, but you've had, you've been collecting food and beverage since September. And so the, the 1% tax went in September, so you received sales for September, October, November, December, January, February, and it's gone down now significantly, we'll see what it is over the next, but, but there is still food being sold and there's still drinks being sold, most of it's takeout right now, things of that nature, but there's still a collection that is being made. The, the thought process I was having is if that was money that had not been considered.
Well, and to add to what you're saying, that's what a lot of communities have done. They have, I think that's what Plainfield, Mark, I have heard that, I have, Mark and I, is, Mark is also the clerk, a different Mark, clerk treasurer for the. I have heard that, I have, Mark and I, is, Mark is also the clerk, a different Mark, clerk treasurer for the town of Plainfield. He and I have been, there's another Mark. Have been playing phone tag and, and as well. Because I reached out to both of them because it's in the news. You know, they've allocated a lot of money to their community. So I wanted to see what funds they were using.
And for some of those communities, you have situations like the food and beverage tax that was enacted at the time the Lucas Oil thing came in. There were no restrictions on how you could use it. You could use it for anything. And so Mooresville, Plainfield, all of these communities and the Dona Counties that enacted it at that time are able to use, use that for anything. Now you've got to go get specific usage. So we're, we're much more narrowed in because we just got that food and beverage tax implemented here. So, but again, that was just an idea of it.
Did you have something?
I'm gonna let you go because.
This has been great discussion. I mean, I'm all for helping small business in the town. But I guess my first, you know, thought was what defines a small business? You know, you got to start somewhere. I personally would feel more comfortable and confident in the decision to have the criteria set first before we allocate any money. So, but I've agreed with comments from everybody. I've disagreed with a few. But I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but that's my two cents.
Which I think is a very good recommendation. I think if you guys wanted to decide on three or four people, probably a couple of you to, to represent that committee and maybe a department head or Mark or my, and myself. I don't know. Kelly would, I would like her to be on it. And we bring it before the next council meeting. I know that agenda is looking like Santa Claus's list, but that's an idea.
We're still talking about forty grand.
I'm sorry?
We're still talking about forty thousand dollars.
Yes. And I mean, yes.
I'll say.
We're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on all the people working to figure out how to get forty thousand dollars.
That's just the amount that I'm comfortable with at this time, with the information that I provided you.
To Chris's point, there are a lot of valid points. And then Tom, you, you made a comment I, I've thought about, but I didn't really think about it till you said it. You know, we, we got to be careful that we're not intruding. I mean, if honestly, some, some of my clients, small businesses, I didn't want them to take those PPP loans because I felt like that was very intrusive and it sets a bad precedent for long term. But that, that is an opinion, of course. It's not a, that's not a fact. It's just an opinion. And so I think there's a lot to consider here before we go down this road. Not just dollars and cents, but common sense perhaps.
That was one of my thoughts as to bringing in the Chamber of Commerce. You know, was that as the fiscal body that we would just determine an, an amount. I don't even know if we should, any one of us should be on the committee to, to structure the, the criteria. Because again, I, I don't believe the government should be telling people how, you know, how either A, the money should be used or, or what they have to provide to us. You know, yes, there is going to be a, I'm going to say a minimum amount of data that probably would need to be collected really just for the future use of, you know, of, you know, call it no repayment in monetary value. But the data could be very valuable from the standpoint of, of applying for grants that could be available to us in the future. But I, I think that, you know, I think that the Chamber of Commerce and, and the Chamber's Board of Directors is comprised of very capable individuals who would be able to put together a plan, you know, for, for us. And even though, you know, Jenny's office would be the, you know, be the ones to, I'll say, cut the checks. And, you know, after those have been vetted and approved by, by the Chamber or Chamber Board.
Forty thousand dollars. You give four thousand dollars to ten people. I don't know. Four thousand dollars would help a couple of groups. But still, that's only ten people. I, I just think the money's too small we're dealing with right now. And I don't really.
I would prefer more.
And I think the energy we're putting into it is probably too much. But again, this is five people. This is my opinion. And that's all I gotta say. If you do go, if we do decide to do something, then maybe come back next time with all kinds of specific options that we'll give this. So you give everybody five hundred dollars. How much is that going to help them? That's not going to get them out of being bankrupt. So I just think the amount of money we're playing with is too small to really make an impact.
In the past, Danville, and, and as somebody who has a business in, in the town of Danville, from time to time, situations have, have been, you know, very, very difficult. You know, there's been times where it's been difficult to do business in Danville. And, and that being said, I, I mean, I think that, you know, we're, you know, we're making some very fantastic strides to, to change that and that we're very welcoming and we're very supportive, you know, of local businesses. And, you know, I, I did throw out a much bigger number, gave Mark a heart attack. And, you know, but I, I wanted to show businesses that are in town, that were even looking at Danville as a possible place to do business, that we mean business. You know, to be able to support, to support those, you know, those companies. Tom, I agree with you a hundred percent that, you know, you know, is, is, is a two hundred or five hundred dollar, you know, contribution going to, going to move the needle? Well, maybe it will, maybe it won't. But, you know, maybe something that we would do as a town would also, you know, be used in conjunction with, you know, some CARES, you know, Act money or PPP and, and, you know, and, and those together, you know, would be there to, to help support those, those businesses. You know, so, I mean, all of, all of that helps. And, and, you know, all of us in town visiting those businesses or, or, you know, hiring those companies, you know, also makes a difference, you know, as well. But I, I guess I, I wanted, you know, I brought this up because I think that, you know, I, I like what the Partnership was doing. I, I think that, you know, we have, we have Brownsburg and Plainfield that have also, you know, gone through indenness. Not saying that I'm trying to compete with them, you know. But I, at some point, we will compete with them. We'll compete with them for the next business. You know, the next restaurant, you know, the next contractor, you know, the next, you know, electrician. You know, we're going to compete with them to say, you know, where am I gonna, where am I gonna build my, my business? You know, and, and, you know, I, you know, some of the things about saying, well, we have to take care of ourselves. I, I don't like the statement because it kind of self, sounds self-serving. But also what I'm about right to say, it kind of sounds self-serving. If we get those other businesses, you know, from Brownsburg or from Plainfield or Avon, you know, what are they bringing with them? They're going to hire people. They're going to pay property taxes. They're going to pay payroll taxes. Where does that money go? It trickles down to us, you know. And, and it allows us to, you know, support our schools, support our firefighters, support our police officers. You know, and things like that. And, and, and if we're, if we're not open to that business, you know, then, you know, we still stay, you know, kind of closed, you know. And I, I want to, I want to be welcoming and love all of those businesses.
All right. I think we've probably put a lot into this. And I'll call for motion. Do I have a motion to approve the economic stimulus, if you want to call it that?
I would make a motion to approve up to forty thousand dollars for a Danville Economic Impact Fund. That would be ran through the Chamber of Commerce. And we would allow the Chamber of Commerce and their Board of Directors to establish the criteria for approving those grants.
Do I have a second? The motion has failed. Thank you, everybody, for your discussion today. Next thing is staff and council comments. I want to start with Mark.
There it is. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Normally in the spring, we have a community cleanup day that was put on hold by Waste Management, the landfill, due to the coronavirus. After speaking with their representatives, we're going to try and do it in the fall. They would rather give this a little bit more time to stretch out before they fill the facility, obviously. So, so we'll work something with the Chamber. If they want to advertise, we'll put flyers and water bills and they'll go out sometime in the fall. If you haven't noticed, on US 36, the military banners have been put up and they look gorgeous. I mean, they are, they are something to see. They really are. So thanks to Public Works getting that done. We are working with the Hendrix County Solid Waste District. We think we've got the contract finalized for upstairs. Looks like they may be moving in by July the first. So we're excited about that. That'll come to, when the contract's available, it'll, it'll come to y'all. Working on the, if you recall before the, our hiatus, I guess, so to speak, on the COVID-19, we had discussed about doing a, redoing our comprehensive plan. Want to let you know, been working to get the RFQ prepared for that. I'm hoping to have it to you by the June 3 meeting so that we can put that out for professional services and see what happens. We are working on an ordinance for food trucks. We have found one of the things during this virus has been we've had an influx of food trucks into the town. So we're working on an ordinance, it'd be a permitting ordinance. And it'll be, it'll actually serve twofold. One, we can see who's coming into our community. But two, I mean, I know this sounds, with all the discussions we've had, these people are coming into our town and they're not paying any food and beverage tax because they're not on our radar. So this helps us make sure that they understand that we do in fact have a food and beverage tax. So they need to be collecting it and, and everything else. So that'll just be part of the permitting process. We can make sure that they understand all of our regulations. So, and then I was notified that the state of Indiana is going to be doing a major project. It's not starting until 2023. But looks like they're going to rehab all of the concrete from, looks like Stratford Way there by CBS and everything, all the way to, I believe, 267. So it is going to be a major, major headache for everybody come 2023. So the last thing, I think I had, the picnic tables have really been well perceived, well received. We've put out nearly twenty picnic tables, so.
I got a lot of good comments on that.
Good. Glad to hear it. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited. We've told them all that we'd keep them out until July 4th. So we'll see where it goes from there. That's all I have.
Maybe they'll be permanent.
Some of them have requested to, to look into that option. You know, I think if you, when you add outdoor seating in your downtown venue, I just, quite honestly, I think it makes your, your downtown more marketable, to be honest with you. I think it, it breaks up the pattern. It looks, I think it's exciting to people, to be honest with you, so.
Thank you, Mark.
First, I just want to thank the council. I just want to thank the council for a spirited conversation. Really enjoyed it. Really, really do appreciate that. I think that that's, you know, our town, you know, our town deserves that kind of communication. And, and when we can, when we can all do that, I really appreciate it. Since the last meeting, I attended Plan, or Planning Commission meeting, also attended the BZA meeting and then also the RDC meeting. In the RDC meeting, the president of the RDC, Ben Comer, wanted me to bring up to the council that they are looking at creating a committee to, to look at the voluntary annexation of property between the Waste Management Facility and the airport. So they wanted me to bring that up to the council if we wanted to either appoint someone or have just a quick discussion on somebody to participate in that meeting. Also, Mr. President, I'd like to, for us to revisit the golf cart ordinance to allow or have a discussion about allowing side-by-sides the, the sport utility vehicles or, yeah. To incorporate that into that plan.
So you're saying upgrade golf carts to
Yeah.
bring in more of a professional looking, like the people use in the park?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Doors and air conditioning and all that?
The ATV type of side-by-sides. And then I would humbly respectfully request a, for the council to have a work study to just revisit maybe where we're at with water and then also planning for some of our future growth.
Will, we need to get Will and David.
Okay, Will.
One, so last meeting, we kind of talked about the, the look of Town Hall, how it's a little rough. It's been 10 years now. And we're looking to kind of, I'm calling it Town Hall Refresh. I have a little packet there. It's rudimentary because I only had like, you know, a week or two to put this together. So four of us went out, walked the, pretty much the grounds and kind of went through and looked at all the things that we think could be possibilities for changes. Trying to keep it very minimal and trying to do most of the things in-house to save a lot of money. And so this is the list we came up with. We did see some kind of things that are going to need some work in the future. Being like a retention wall has fallen apart in the, what is it? The southwest next to our neighbor. We got to find out whose wall it is. That one's falling apart a little bit. We also talked about, we've had some dumpster issues in the back. And we'd like to follow the town's policies, bring it up top and fence it and make it easier for the raised trash to come in and grab it. Plus, it adds more parking spaces to the back where the police and then also the handicap entrance for the deck as well. Those are some questions. Those are bigger projects. We believe we can do it for somewhere around ten thousand dollars with most of the things coming in-house. I kind of just handwrote some things in there on things to change. We really want to look at, of course, the shrubs. Everyone hates the shrubs. So number one would be ripping out the shrubs to actually see what we have. We found a bunch of rocks, actually, really nice, you know, landscaping rocks inside some of them so we can reuse some of those things. I'm sure 10 years ago, it looked wonderful, but it's just time for a refresher. And we think we can do a lot of those things. In-house, also moving some of the beds and maybe moving the flagpole. We have that really nice bell, you know, in the front where you drop off your utility bill. Maybe moving the flagpole to the middle of the roundabout there and putting some nice landscaping there. Switching away from mulch because you have to do it every year. So if we switch to rock, then it's easier to maintain. It does cost a little bit more, but in, in the lifespan, it's going to be way better. So we're just kind of looking to reduce the footprint a little bit, but still follow our own guidelines, as Lisa pointed out. And really, it's, it's a team effort. It's going to take several departments and, I mean, just kind of throwing out there for you. You asked me to go and, and look at the options and sat down with Jenny and Mark about it too, just making sure they're aware. And the only thing is money, what it boils down to. You know, where's the 10,000 going to come from? And I didn't really find any answers to that.
Stimulus fund.
Yeah. Just, just looking at options. I know Barry said maybe there's some in there or maybe he could give a little help with some of the manpower. there or maybe he could give a little help with some of the manpower parts of it. Um...
So, my question is, when, when Barry and I met yesterday, we had, and Lisa, we had spoke about that the Indiana Department of Environmental Management could possibly assist because of, but is this, is that a separate project than this?
No, that, what that is, is we have two rain gardens out front. When this property was redeveloped, there were certain water quality requirements. And those requirements, it's a post-construction BMP. I know that's foreign probably to you guys, but basically it filters the runoff from our parking lots before, before it goes in the storm sewer. So, those have not been maintained. Um, our grounds around the outside, there was really no department or no one that was in charge of maintaining those and it's gotten out of hand. So, I had somebody that was mobilizing in town and I asked them to come in and tear the shrubs out. That was part of that repair to all the storm, the, to the rain gardens. It was part of that. They were going to basically donate their time. They would take the shrubs to the Waste Management and they would, or McCarty's, and they would, we would pay the fee to dispose of it. So, that was the whole idea. But it's not really, it is related to IDIM, but those, that's an IDIM requirement for our water quality. Uh, we are in MS4. Uh, that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. Um, as part of that, that's what that's for. So, it would come out of the MS4 line item.
But none of this 10,000 would? That's my question. Okay, thank you.
The idea would be that the, the rain gardens would, would come out of storm water, but none of the landscaping would be able to.
Right, this 10,000 would, okay.
That's, that's kind of the hard part with this project is it's kind of no one departments. So, that's, we all teamed up. Here's the plan, but it's kind of reminds me of the website a little bit. It's like no one's fully in charge of that entity. So, it makes it a little bit harder to, there's no money, you know. Everybody else has already earmarked what they're doing with their specific things and this is a, a pop fly in there. And so that's when we're kind of looking at where can we find those dollars?
So, my question to you guys, because I wasn't involved in this, is where were you thinking we would pay for it from? Did anybody have any ideas?
I was just doing the research.
Okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We do have maintenance. Uh, we have the host maintenance. We also have CCI. Those typically take care of the maintenance for the building. Um, so far this year, we've done pretty well, but there are costs that the council will be seeing here before long about water heaters and things like that. And we have to weigh those numbers and see how much money there is left.
Right. Because you all have that report in front of you. I provided that for...
Yeah, there is, there's money there, but how much I don't know.
And we, hopefully, we are going to save some money. We have some roofing insurance claims coming in, which we'll talk about maybe in the next meeting. Um, that should save some dollars out of that fund as well. Um, so I don't know. It's, it's really up to you guys. I just came up with the plan. Uh, the dollars, it's kind of out of my hand on, hands on that one. But, but just kind of letting you know, we can do it in-house, but it will, you know, at a minimum, will probably cost around $10,000. We think we could probably save some areas, but I wanted to make sure there was some room in there just in case, you know, like if Barry gets busy or we get busy, we'd still have a little bit of room to maybe hire some of the pieces out.
So, my recommendation would be there's $785,000 in the host priority projects that have been allocated for other priority projects that have not been completed. If you guys feel like this is a priority, my recommendation would be that it would be paid fully from host priority projects. Now, I know Greg, that gets in your wheelhouse, but it does. It's for the quality of the, you know, community and I can speak for myself. Most nights, um, after meetings, I'm the last one to leave here and it, I, it scares me to death because there could be 15 people on that first shrub would you come out of the building. I mean, it truly does scare me. I have tried to park in the back, you know, down, because Jim has been gracious enough to allow me to start parking back there, but it's still scary to leave as you're a woman and Lisa as well. I mean, it's usually her and I, uh, leaving and Kelly, um, at night alone. I come, because of my personal life, I come in here a lot on Sunday nights and work.
How about us guys? I got attacked by that damn thing.
Yeah, and it's scary. So, so, and it's ugly and I think there's worms in it and there could be a body buried under that one because I, I couldn't believe all the bottles is that, this started coming up yesterday. I mean, it's ugly. It needs to be done. Um, it's just, is it a priority of ours? And, I mean, I think no matter what, I'm happy to get a bulldozer. I think Matt has wanted to get the shrubs. No matter what, those things have got to come out. I mean, I'd get those out.
And it can be something we phase in if you want to. Um, the only problem that Lisa brought up actually was we have certain standards for the town that we expect other places to do. And if we don't follow those same standards, you know, we shouldn't follow, you know, we should always be following our standards, if not exceeding those standards. So, that, that would be the only thing. If we, we can't really go slow at this project, I don't think. But we, to get the bushes out will be number one.
Would it be possible to look at the funding that we had set aside for Ripfest since that, uh, did not happen this year? Would that, would we be able to utilize that? I know it's part of the priority projects, uh, app, application. So, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, it's, uh...
Yeah, because it's the same dollar amount, isn't it?
Yes.
So, that's, that's an idea as well.
So, uh, what can we do to help you? What do we need to do up here? Anything?
So, what you would have to do is I would need, or we would need a motion from one of you to approve $10,000 to come from the host priority projects for the proposal that Will and Barry have presented this evening. And I would just need approval to move forward and you guys can roll in the morning. I mean, it's, so it would take a motion.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion on what Jenny just said?
I will. I move that we go ahead with the host priority program and, uh, and say, let's go ahead with the $1,000 job.
Thank you, Nancy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
David Winters?
Jumping different.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
We have, uh, motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to work on that. It'll be definitely a team effort with everyone. It's going to have to chip in all the departments.
Thank you, Will.
Uh, I have two other things, if that's okay. Um, so...
Our 21 meeting is lasting two hours.
I'll be quick. I, I just want to touch base. I sent out, um, kind of like the park launch. I didn't want to call it anything Corona COVID because I'm tired of that stuff. Uh, more of a, hey, this is where we're going. It's time to get back to business. And there's a lot of details in the bottom three that I sent out today. So, if you have any questions, feel free to call me. Uh, we are making some changes and really, most of them have to do with money and staffing. And, um, we think we met, you know, the guidelines as best we could. Um, and, you know, I'm excited that we're still pushing forward on everything. So, we're not, you know, the pool's pushed back a little bit, but most things are, are still go ahead. They're just changed a little bit. Uh, and some of the changes are kind of nice because they're things that we've always wanted to do and now we can kind of test the waters a little bit. But all the features that we normally do will be there. Just the pool will be delayed a little bit and have some modifications. Um, summer park program, we're going to have registration limits and try to focus on just Danville residents as well. And the DAC, uh, I'd like to offer you guys, if you want to come on a tour after the meeting, if that's allowed. Is that allowed? Okay. It's not done yet, but it's close to being done. We did a remodel kind of with, uh, some of that time and some membership things. I can't really show you the membership things yet because we got to do training on them and stuff, but I can just kind of show you the basis of the remodel if anybody's, wants to come and check it out after the meeting. And that's it.
Hey, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do. Of course, I have several things.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll make these very, very fast. Um, Courtney ran a report for me. We have 140, um, utility accounts that are past due. Um, 19 or 20 of them are three months behind. And so, we are working on a letter to send to our customers, um, depending on what the governor does as far as collections. As soon as we can, we will do, um, we're working with Matt and Jerry. We will do shut offs and, um, go ahead.
So, this is way out of normal, isn't it?
No, I'm really proud of them. It's not. We talked about this yesterday with Matt. Um, it's not. It, it, we are actually under...
140 is okay.
So, I can say...
Not okay, but you know.
Right. Our citizens have done well with, yeah. We are under, wouldn't you say that's fair, Courtney? Under where we normally would be. So...
Disconnects to July 1.
Okay, so there we go. So, I'll keep, we're watching it very closely. Um, so I want to let you know. The next thing is, um, Brenda, my chief deputy, she noticed, and I, I have for you guys, our interest earned, um, in our banking accounts, just in case you guys have caught this on the reports. Brenda caught that it plummeted, um, the last two months. We thought it may be the economy, but it actually wasn't. There was a glitch in the banking software and Brenda caught that. And so, I just want to thank her because you'll see on the report, it's to the tune of about $7,000. So, I just, between all of our funds. So, I presented you guys with a report that's in the packet as well. The, um, if you guys have any questions about what I emailed you last night and everything you have, but just please reach out to me. The very last two things that I have is, um, June, I've got too much going on up here. Hang on one second. Okay, June the 5th, I'm, would like to have a department head budget retreat with the department heads. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. That's a Friday. Um, we're going to start about 9:00 AM and, and go until we finish. Um, that will take place in the town manager's conference room. I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Saturday, July 25th, I would like to have a council department head, um, open to the public, of course, 2021 budget retreat. Um, I would like to start at 9:00 AM here. Jim said that we could utilize the, uh, police department training room. Um, my goal would be to be finished around 2:00 or 3:00. Uh, we will provide lunch. Um, we may get done as early as 1:00. Um, we had a department head meeting earlier this week. At this point, um, with the numbers that we have worked together on, I am strongly recommending that we freeze our budget, um, other than the possibility of raises until we have more information. But, you know, shares haven't been certified and, and of course, you know, it's still early, you know. We really start looking at this July 1st when we have our first six months numbers. But, um, I'm going to do it different this year. Um, I'm going to provide you guys with as much information, not that I didn't do that before, but I'm going to provide as much information as I can, just, and, um, have binders for you guys. I, I also am looking at taking a different route as far as, um, I'm not sure yet, as far as who, uh, I partner with and what we do as far as, um, a financial advisor. I, I feel very, very comfortable in my position. This is my fifth year for doing a budget. I don't want to, don't hold me to this, but I may not use a financial advisor, uh, this time. What I'll have to do is that after we all work through this together, we're all incredibly intelligent. I have David, I have Greg, I, I have all of you. We're all incredibly intelligent. All these department heads, we've all been here now 10 years. Mark's, you know, I feel very confident in what we do. I, 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 I feel like I'm going to do it this year, um, as much as I can. The state, every single day, is passing down new guidelines. As you all know, it's ever-changing. Um, so I'm going to have to have a financial advisor review it before I submit it to the state. It's a new state statute. But, I, I think this year, we're just going to do it on our own. And i-if we get to September and they, they say you guys have 27 heads and this is stupid, then we'll adjust. But, I feel very confident we can do it. So, if there are, having said all of that, if there are things you guys want to see, David and I have been working very well together. Greg and I have been working very well together. Um, David asked for some really good reports that, um, this is a new council and I'm not saying anything bad against the other council, but they didn't want inundated with information. You know, it can be overwhelming, you know, and it can be confusing. So, they, um, back, had me back off of reports. I love reports. I love doing that stuff. Um, so I'm probably just going to start throwing them at you guys. If it gets to be too much, just tell me to stop. And if, I did for David, um, over the weekend, uh, five-year analysis of every single fund. It wasn't that bad of a report. Um, I'm working with a programmer with our accounting software. Um, David had a really good idea as well, that he wanted to look at 2019's first quarter numbers compared to 2020's first quarter numbers. Our accounting software, there's not a program that does that, that it would take me a gazillion hours to do something like that. And, um, so I'm working, um, with our programmer to, to, um, have a software that we can do that. And I can just hit some buttons and it's going to take me an hour or two compared to 20 of extracting it to Excel. So, I just wanted to add all of that and let you guys know that that's the direction I'm going to head. And we'll, we'll just see how it goes. And, you know, um, you guys stop me, slow me down, the same with the department heads. But, um, w-we now have weekly department head meetings and we're just doing things a lot different. So, I just feel very comfortable and it, call me tomorrow and be very kind to me if you don't agree with me, but this is where I'm going.
Jenny, what was the date of the, uh, retreat for the council?
July 25th, if it's okay with you guys. It's a Saturday. I don't feel like we'd have enough, um, time in the evenings to do one. So, if, I wanted to back it out far enough that I'd, I'd have real numbers and, um, we'd have plenty of time. So, if you guys are all available, I met with the department heads and I told them that if they're not available, if they could send their smartest pupil in their place, that that would help. But, we're going, Saturday, July 25th, if that works for you guys. And Greg had mentioned he wants to have a work study before that. So, we probably need to look at a date for you, Greg. Because with everything going on, we haven't certified the host 2020 budget yet. So, we've got to get that done. And Will has worked very hard and has reports that he's already given you guys. And I don't think too much has changed, other than like what we did tonight with the landscaping. But, he could resend those to you guys probably tomorrow and, but we do need to get that done soon, sooner than later. I'll shut up now.
Thank you.
What? Just call me Jimmy Russell. I'll take it his place since he's retired.
Okay, are we done?
I'm done. I promise.
Okay, thank you very much, Jenny. That's very informative. I think you're on the right track there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And yourself? And Nancy? I think I've said enough today. Do I have a motion to approve the claim dockets?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been passed.
Wait, roll call? Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, no, did we not roll call a claim docket?
It's okay.
Okay. I'm tired. David Winters?
Chris Gerald? Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Greg Van Leer?
I started with him, didn't I?
Yeah. Yeah. That's all right. It's all good.
Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's been adjourned. Thank you very much for a very interesting meeting tonight.